Call to order the August ninth special meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item Seven. If anybody would like to fill out a comment card to speak during public comment, comment cards are over there at the table where you walked in. Now, Ms. Tryon, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello. Welcome over there. It's August, still, goodness. Oh, right.
It's until July, I'm not gonna...
It's August, oh my goodness, two weeks till school. All right, could I please have a motion to consider the consent grouping?
I approve consent grouping, Items Three, Eight, and Eight.
All right, are there any items that a board member would like to pull up for special consideration? All right, anything in particular you would like to draw our attention to? Dr. Schubel.
I'm just excited that we'll be able to post the calendar the community has been asking for. You know, by the end of the day, it will be posted and we will do a parent e-glass vessel so that they know that it's done. So, two different ways they'll get it today and we're excited about that.
Great, all right, any discussion on these items? Only a couple of them, they're pretty straightforward, all right, so could we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, I can see that there.
Yes.
Mrs. Warren?
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Goleb?
Yes.
Dr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Tryon, yes.
All right. Okay, all right, next item is the breakfast program. Can I have a motion to approve the operating of a breakfast program at all of our instructional buildings?
I approve the breakfast program at all of our instructional buildings.
Okay, and discussion on this, I know that this is a change from our special meeting that we had in June where we approved some of them because, all right, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is my understanding, is that in June we approved those where 20% of the kids met the free or reduced lunch standard because that's what we would get reimbursed for for those schools. Now, we are getting federal fun-
Federal funds?
State funds. State funds to provide free lunches for everybody in all of the schools, but in order to do that, we also have to provide breakfast to the people in those schools. And those are also going to be paid for through state funds, it's not an expenditure out of our operating budget. And so that's why we're now going back and offering breakfast at the other schools that we didn't vote to approve for in June.
Correct.
Okay, good, glad I got that right.
Correct.
And because the state had not approved their budget when we had to make this decision in June, that's why it was never even discussed at that point. It was on the table, but until it became a reality, districts really couldn't take action on it.
Right.
So can I ask a quick question on this? The food that comes from these programs is provided by the government, correct? Do we buy bulk food from the government for these programs? Or does it come from the three programs, I guess?
No.
That's pretty much it.
Um, it's a combination, so we do participate in a commodity program, which is that bulk purchasing that the federal government does on behalf of all school districts. But we also do some other local purchasing, we might buy some from local vendors, we do a lot with Ford Food Service, so it's kind of a combination for that.
Okay, so the government is like giving us a, how does that work with the government?
Economy is a discounted program, right? So the food that we're purchasing is a discounted, so if you run off straight to the market, it would be a little bit higher than what we're having to pay for.
Okay, and then I just have a weird question, is there a place where the ingredients on what we're purchasing bulk on is somewhere for parents? I mean, just in case we get asked, what's in, like, do you mean offering the food, you know what I mean? Like, for instance, for me, I can't have a milk or a egg product that's pork. Does that, you know, like when you go to a restaurant?
I know for me, when I am ordering, when I'm looking at the menu for my kids in the morning to tell them what the options are, there is a spot that the ingredients are listed. And we have a, so there's a Nutrislice and the menu is actually on our website, so that parents can look at. But we do actually work with all of our families, so they typically alert our food service department about specific allergies for their students. And then we create special menus for those students every year so that they know and parents select, these are, because we give them a couple options even. And so then they select what they would like for their student. Make sure we don't have any issues.
Okay, just in case somebody asks, so we can direct them. So if it's like a canned peaches, it will list all, whatever the ingredients are, right, from the canned peaches, not just peaches and water and syrup, whatever else is in it, it's listed.
Yeah, I honestly don't know if it does that level of detail, so I would need to look into that.
Okay, because I have a, I'm just, and the reason I'm asking is because poured eggs, it has a milk product in it, which if somebody's allergic, do you know what I mean, like, so it's not eggs, it's, there's like an additive in there. And I noticed that, like, I had to discover that on my own, so I was just curious, do you know what I mean?
Yes.
It's like instead of cracked eggs, it's-
You're right, so our food service, our director and our chef are aware of those types of things we talked about. And so they know that if, you know, Julie, the student, has an allergy to dairy, then they look at that and make sure that Julie's not getting that, whatever that meal offering is, that would have that in it.
Perfect, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on breakfast program?
All right, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Yes, it's Simon.
Yes, it's Dora.
Yes.
Mrs. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Goleb?
Yes.
Dr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Tryon, yes. Okay, reminder for anybody that wants to make a public comment, there are public comment cards over there by the door. They will be picked up after the informational items, which we're moving on to now. Dr. Schubel.
Um, just wanted you to know that I've been working with MLI to try to finalize the search timeline. And the reason I jumped into the equation was because he sent that email out on Friday that had an attachment for the board. And Bailey's out this week on vacation, well-deserved vacation. So I stepped in to take a, make sure that the comments that had already been provided were updated. And I think it might have been an older version that was sent to you inadvertently. And so I worked with David yesterday and Kristen to try to finalize the language. And then we sent it out to Mary and CJ, who had been on the search committee, subcommittee. And so I have what I think is your final version, which I will send to you electronically. And then it'll get posted either this week or Monday ASAP.
On the website, unfortunately.
On the website, yes, so I will send you what, the dates didn't change, they're all the same. It was just some of the language that was on the descriptors. And then also the information graphic that's going to go with it so that parents can see. And knowing that it'll be updated as you go along the process, so.
Is this something we have to approve again because of the changes that are being made?
Well, oh, excuse me, I don't think so, they were-
No, the dates are-
The dates are-
You know, when we looked at it, we're like, if the community understands what this needs, you know, put it in terms of the understanding of the process we're covering.
Lemon terms versus non-traditional terms.
Yes. So I will send that out later this afternoon. And then I wanted Julie to just talk quickly about the transportation communication that we're going to be doing because, as you know, we're going to be going to an electronic card for students. And so getting questions and getting ready, and there's been a lot of work that's been going on to get us to this point. So how do we communicate with parents so that they feel comfortable with the start of the school year coming up?
Yeah, so we're pretty excited, this has been a long process, I think it was back in April of '22 that the board of group is moving forward with updating our transportation system. And there, just a reminder, there are three components to this upgrade. One is called, oh shoot, electronic rollout. And that is really, really for the bus driver and it provides a tablet on the bus and it's going to help them and give them step-by-step route directions, right? So in the past, they've had a sheet of paper, so she can imagine learning your new route or during the year and it's dark and you're asleep and you're trying to read a paper and make sure you're following all protocol for driving a bus and not missing a stop. So we're pretty excited about that and our drivers have just started using that towards the end of last year. But the other two big components that impact our families are the telematics is the official term for that. But that's that scan card system that our students will use to get on and off the bus. Right now, we're simply rolling out for the regular school day. We have dreams and aspirations to maybe get to the point for our trips, but we haven't really do that. But we're focusing on this school year right now. So we've got that piece, and then the other piece is a new parent app, it's called My Ride K-12. It's a more robust app. It will let our parents know, actually, once they register and connect their students to them, it will let them know when their students scan on the bus and when they scan off the bus. And it will give better departure and arrival times, it'll give them estimates. So the old app just kind of said, here's where the bus, the bus is on its route. This will be a little bit more robust and specific. So we are pretty excited about that. We had route selection this week with our drivers and all routes have been signed, so we're super excited about that. So we have drivers to fill all of our routes, which is great news for us. So our next step is we are working on updating our website. We've provided the information to our team to do that work and, you know, our goal is by the end of the day, that will be updated. We have a family communication that we will be sending out by the end of this week. We want a couple days there to make sure that our links are working because we'll have links that will direct them to our website so that they can, they'll have to log into the app and how to, you know, where you go to download that and all of that information. So that family communication will be sent out just to our transportation family. So those students are currently routed on a bus, we'll pull down their information from the VersaTrain system or Traversa system, and then we'll send that via school messenger to those families. There will also be frequently asked questions, documents that we're working through right now, all those things that, you know, why are we moving to this and why does my student have this scan to get on and off the bus? And all of those questions that we're trying to anticipate that our families will ask in advance. There'll be a living document, right? So as we are rolling this out and, you know, what about this? Oh, that's a great question, you know, that's something we should probably add to that queue. So that piece we're putting together. And then there will be some informational things that we will be sharing with families as well all related to that. We do know that Tyler Technologies is a company with Traversa and they have given us quite a bit of this information, they rolled it out in other districts across the country. So there was a video that can show, help our students to know what to do when they get on and off the bus. We will be starting the year though with our drivers logging the students on and off. So a bus will pull up to the bus stop and they know that, you know, Holly, Mallory, etc. to get onto that bus stop. So as Holly's boarding, the driver will accept Holly onto the bus, then will accept Mallory onto the bus. And then the same thing when they get to the bus stop for departure. We are working on the cards, will be distributed probably a few weeks out yet. And part of that delay is because we know now that we can do some combination work with that card, we're pretty excited about it. We just approved having a breakfast program at all of our schools for this year to be able to participate in the Michigan Meals Program. We've learned that we can put some things on that card. And with the breakfast program, that we're going to have the students that want to participate, scan in. So we're able to add the scan code onto the card. So the transportation card is an RFID card. So if you think of a card access system like we have in here, it's that little white card and you hold it up and it beats them in. Transfer, or food service is more of a sticker on there that's a scan code, so the two don't talk to each other. But we're excited that we're going to be able to put a scan bar on the card so that some may be a little bit of a delay for us. And we're also working through how to make sure that that card has some type of identification so that if it's lost within the school, anybody who finds it and, you know, gets to the office and the office can all who that card belongs to right away instead of having to contact transportation department and say, here's this card number, who does it belong to? So all the things that are coming, I guess that our goal is, the website will be updated in the day. We'll spend the next day or so making sure that all of our links are working. And then we'll send out that communication to our families by the end of the week. And route information and bus stop information will be available to them on Tuesday next week. And that will be a part of that communication.
How are the kids, like, how, how are the kids, like, I'm thinking specifically about elementary kids. So they're responsible for their cars, so are they going to be put in a lanyard of some sort?
So that's a great question, we met with our administrators last week and said, well, how do we do that, right? Not by world, I've got an early administrative work doing. So we've had, we've got a couple different ideas. We've talked about lanyards and then making sure that there are breakaway lanyards. We've also looked at those, if you think of those, like, little plastic sleeves that have, like, a loop on it that you could attach to the backpack.
Oh, yeah.
And that is always attached to the backpack, which might be a little bit better when you think about wintertime and then transition and a lanyard and it would be tucked in with a coat and then they're trying to get it out of the coat to get on the bus.
And that was a parent, I don't have to remember every morning that they're wearing-
But they gotta put their lanyard on, right? If we could get something attached to the backpack, we're kind of looking at that.
That's great. So if it's attached to the backpack, can we use it for breakfast?
Yes, that would be the goal, right? Attach it to the backpack and then if we would scan them on and off the bus, right? But they put had that barcode on for scanning for breakfast, exactly, that's what we're thinking. Because they could go up to breakfast if they're going to participate and then they would scan right back.
Still have to take it off the backpack? No, I'm not saying, they could just walk right in and-
They just walk right in and the food service staff would just scan it.
They would go before they order lockers.
Right, okay, that makes sense.
Oh, yes, sorry.
All right, I have a transportation-related question that they may or may not be able to answer. But I have received this question repeatedly in the past week from parents about the forms that they all have to fill out online now for registering their kids. And one of them is a bus form. And the parents keep saying, well, I filled out a bus form back in June, why am I filling it out now again? And so some are afraid to fill it out because they don't want to mess up what they filled out in June. So this is just something that's come up several times for me, so I just, if there's no answer, then just be it-
There's a lot of questions about the forms and I think basically it would be great if this, if the community knew, because I did it already. You are basically re-enrolling your student in Forest Hills Public Schools when you fill those forms out. You have to provide the proof of residency again, that I only have to do in years. And I think that is just saying, you know, by surprise, that they have to do that all that again. And I think the bus transportation thing is like the same way, just like to establish a baseline on one-
That's what I'm thinking, I think people, some people I've heard are afraid, they're like, well, I don't want to, like, mess up, like, I don't want to tune in the system and disrupt the system by having that paper one in June and now an electronic one. So should I not do the electronic one because I did a paper one? So everybody should be filling out the electronic transportation form.
If they fill them out, if they fill them out in the spring, June, it's not going to mess up. That's the information that we took to build the bus routes and that we're using to establish bus stops at all of the schools. So it won't combat that, although there should be all set.
All right, so they don't need to fill out the transportation form?
I was, I was aware that there was a transportation form with the new online enrollment, I didn't know there was a form. So this is new information for me.
Okay.
So that makes sense, your question was to Dr. Schubel, why? And now, so I'll look into that because I wasn't aware that there was a form specific to transportation. And all those new ones that, you know, the residency and everything else, so I'll look into seeing what we're actually doing.
Another common question with that is just the thinking that, well, does this mean I won't have to prove residency next year? Like, I think it's been a irritation to some people because they're like, oh, I'm doing this again. But I think if it's something that's now going to be in the system, then it might be nice for people to know that. They're like, we're redoing this and this is, you're not going to necessarily have to do this again.
So the question I have is with the RFID badge, just a couple of things with that. One, we're not tracking kids, correct? It's like a library book, you're checking in, right, to the bus, you're checking out on the bus.
It doesn't track your ID, now, it is-
So it's not like somebody's pass, it's like how we have it on our GPS on our phones. And so is this a precursor to try to, because this is something that I had asked at the beginning, like, back in January, right? We're not setting up for RFID badges for students at school, okay? So, and then the other thing with that is with this Tyler Technologies where they're holding all the information on the students. It's not an in-house thing that we have with our firewall for our students, like, logging into the bus and stuff? Is it an off-site thing that's holding our students' information, or how does that work?
It's a server that's in the, one of those, in the cloud server, so it's not an on-premise, it's what they call when it's onsite, a server onsite. So it'll be similar to some of our other things that are already off. It is in this server that's in the cloud dedicated to Forest Hills.
Okay, so I'm going to ask a weird question. So it's unhackable, like, somebody can't go in there and change bus routes because if they're just reading, they're not reading a piece of paper anymore and they're doing this and things logging in and out, there's no way somebody can go in and totally mess up and the bus ends up forever with a bunch of kids, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, that's a question, I'm not- Sure, anybody could stand here and say that any technology system is unhackable. It's, I mean, there are people out there who, that's what they do 24/7, right? That's their goal is to try to disrupt and see what they can get into and disrupt any type of system. So I can't tell you that it's unhackable.
Right, so the backup plan would be that we trained our bus drivers not to deviate from the route that they're on even though the system that they actually, to pull over or call to say, I've got an issue, just like we do right with our, when something happens on our technology, we don't sit there engaging and push the button, engage in it. We actually call and get the backup, I just want to make sure that we have a certain voice.
They'll learn the route and they'll know, you know, if all of a sudden, if for some reason it's taken over and it's telling them to turn left and they've always turned right, then they're probably going to call the office to say, hey, what's going on? Because it could be that there's construction and it's requiring them to do it easier, I don't know, but yeah, they don't have that communication.
Okay, okay. I have something else that'll come up once you, go ahead, talk, it might just come up.
I have another question regarding the cards, because you're talking about putting the barcode on the back of the transportation thing so that those kids could scan for breakfast. Would, I thought that the kids scanned for their meals with their school ID card.
They, it depends on what level, so the lunch program, the lunch and breakfast is treated differently.
Okay.
They don't use the same process to have students, you know, participate, purchase in, purchase a meal through those two programs. So for lunch, they do something a little bit different. And I'm not going to stand here and say, I know that is, but I know they don't scan, oh, I think the students go in and enter their ID number.
Right.
And then they do something different for the elementary and our little students who don't necessarily know.
The elementary has a sticker that they wear on their clothes.
Oh, where they, yeah, they- And they get it from the class, the teacher.
Of course.
She passes out a sticker to every kid so that when they go through the lunch line, they know that that kid is getting out of lunch, yeah.
So what about the kids that don't ride the bus that want breakfast?
Yeah, so they'll work, they're working through that piece of, I think in the meantime, what we had talked about is we're going to get, we're going to just print our own cards and then put the barcode on it for those students who are, they drop off in lunch, right?
Okay, I remember what my other question was, is with the online forms that are going on right now, parents have the opportunity to print their forms also and bring them in, correct?
I mean, I've not been a part of that process, so I'm going to look back to my colleagues here to know. I think if they, if they can't, if they don't have a computer to access the system, they can come in and we have computers available for them to do that. I think worst-case scenario, certainly if a parent just didn't feel comfortable with that or didn't have the ability, we could still print the forms and enter the information.
And what I'm, what I'm referring to mainly is there's been a lot of back chat or conversation about the opt-out form and some of the rubber that's on, on, on things for students to, you know, opt out of certain things and I know sometimes-
Like the media release stuff?
Uh-huh, and so a lot of parents have been asking if they, you know, can, can bring it in, you know, hand, their own hand instead of electronic so it's more specific geared toward their child, that's, that's the question that's been asked a lot.
I believe that the legal options for opt-out are listed on the form. I think sometimes what parents want to do is say, I'm going to opt out X, Y, Z. And as a district, we're not responsible for necessarily monitoring all of that. At some point, and I know we had a lot of parents asking that question about essentially a parent's right to direct their child's education. Ultimately, that means they have the right to direct their child's education, whether they're in a public school or a private school or an online school. But sometimes parents are, have, few parents, very few, have asked us to be so specific in what they don't want their child exposed to that there's really no way to monitor that in a, in a classroom environment. So I think if a parent's printing the form to fill it out because they don't have the tools to fill it out online, that's one thing. If they want to add 20 things that they want their child opted out of, I think that's a whole different issue that we would have to address and the parent would have to contact Sarah's office, Scott's office, my office, and talk through those things. Because sometimes parents are asking things that they're legally not entitled to and frankly are difficult for us to monitor.
Right, I think the opt-out, there's two, two parts that I'm hearing on back chatter is, one, medical, like, we have to administer, they're signing up for, for the school to administer medical treatment to the child without, you know what I mean? Like, you're on anything, so that leaves the door way, way more open.
We don't administer any medication without-
No, not medication, any medical treatment or anything, yes, yes, emergency. And so I think what they're, it's playing out the scenario, you know what I mean? Like, they, I think there's, there's a couple of parents that want a little bit more control over the piece. And so I don't know what that looks like, you know, printing a, you know what I mean? And then the other one was the opt-out of certain things that I know you guys have been working on, the media library, you know, the book, the whole thing across the board and such. And so I think, you know, it's just, and I was kind of like, hey, just wait to see, but if they have questions, I just wanted to know, like, how do you, you know, direct them if you're going to, so it's an individual case, I'm guessing. But it's not just one parent, it's, you know, so there's chatter going on in the back of those two pieces of the puzzle. So I just wanted to know if that's, it has to be electronic or is there going to be a, kind of like with the food allergy. If we can do a food allergy thing and curtail to this, you know, if there's certain, you know, specific things that, you know, parents asking within reason, you know what I mean, like, that we would be able to maybe accommodate that as well.
I think I would suggest, you're right, every form can't cover every eventuality for a parent. If they have concerns, they certainly, when they have options, but if they know specifically it's really up to instruction of these staffs office, if it's related to a medical, it might be student services. If a parent, if you just want to get overall traction, I would say reach out to the superintendent's office because Val's worried at sending those calls to the places where they belong. Certainly, if parents have questions, we don't want them to feel uncomfortable in filling out forms.
Right, and I haven't been asked personally, I just know that it's chatter that you watch, it's going to come eventually. You know, just kind of walk through the questions, like, FAQ a little bit on, you know, things, you know, different things have changed. We're reregistering kids or reregistering things, then what does that mean? So I think that's where it's kind of coming from and what that means to them, so, okay, cool, thank you.
One question on the transportation, so you said you were going to send information to parents who are already signed up for buses. What about those parents who can't remember if they did or are behind on the equal or sometimes they don't remember?
So if, if you're-
For a friend, right?
Well, tell your friend that if they're robbing, right, if they have, they're robbing in the system even though you signed up, right, then you're going to receive the communication.
Okay.
And if they aren't, because we'll start to get those calls. Hey, when are my, when's my bus route available, you know, when do I know that? And we're like, well, we, we already sent it out, but let's, we'll look up your student? Oh, we don't currently have them scheduled to, so then that will start that whole process.
Well, I didn't know if it would be like, it may be whole parent communication just says, if your child's on a bus, this information is going out to you Friday, if you don't receive it, your child, you might want to fill out the form.
Are you, are you suggesting that, because we are going to target the schoolmaster to those families, are you suggesting that we decide to do all the history?
No, maybe, maybe just in a broader communication about the start of school, like, we send out this information to parents, I don't know.
Well, we probably already, do we have something like that on the website? So if I'm, like, in this situation and look in, you hit the transportation button and then it lists kind of what they're asking. So you, you're kind of putting the message out because then they have to look at it. But it, but it covers both things of if you didn't do this, because you know you have last, I mean, there's last minute parents, you know? And then, and, or if you have, don't worry about that, you should receive it by this time if you don't. You know, here's, you know, I'm going to contact, so.
I think, I believe they're still planning on it, that we started it last year and it was, it was really successful in having the drivers that are driving out of each school actually at the open houses. And, you know, it's been, some families come in, it's really nice, they have a table there, so then families are there. So that might be another place that we could, you know, send them up, oh, wait, I didn't register for transportation. And they could walk up to the table and say, I don't think I registered, what do I need to- And they can walk up to the table and say, I don't think I registered, what do I need to do? Then the individuals are going to say, yeah, so you should do that. Although I think they're still planning on doing that, I think that was really promising.
And it is a question. I have a friend whose child is going to start kindergarten in a week and a half and she still hasn't registered.
Oh, in the district at all?
Yeah. She has three kids, alright, she doesn't know.
Oh, so.
Tell us that.
There are reasons we can't validate the class.
Yeah, I told her that.
Or the bus, or the buses. It'd be nice to know what building they're going to go into.
Collins.
Collins, okay, so.
If you have the paperwork, you can turn in for that.
Yeah, that'd be great, but thank you for telling us what building.
So after we send it out, Anthony, I would encourage you, if you're hearing some chatter from families here, kind of like there's some common questions that you're hearing, if you would just let me know. And then I'll make sure that those get addressed on our FAQ. And they may already be there and it might be, hey, did you check out the frequently asked questions? Have you gone to the district webpage? But if you could keep me in the loop on those, that would be fantastic because then I could say, oh yeah, we've already addressed that on there. I should number them, I have them just as a regular bullet, I'll number them because I can say it's number two or number four, whatever it is on that FAQ and that would help.
There is one more that I would bring up and I know you've heard about this already and it is about the forms. You're supposed to be able to click a box that then would transfer all of your residency information. It's not really working. You have to re-enter it for every single kid, do you guys know that?
I just heard it from Sally, like five minutes ago. No, and that was one of the primary reasons.
I know, I was so pumped.
You were supposed to do it one time.
You can click the box, it does say, apply to Georgia trying. And then I get to Georgia's screen and none of it's happening.
Yeah, that, yeah, I feel terrible about that because that is one of the biggest reasons we weren't doing this and I didn't, first time I heard that.
So anyway, just FYI. Well, fix it now because I haven't filled the forms yet.
I do have your friend. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome. Do you have any other informational items?
No, other than it's been a really fun week for me because I've been able to be with staff as they've come back to do some of the training. So I met with new staff and it's just the energy, the energy in the room was incredible to see how excited they are. And there were a couple of connections for me from East and that was a lot of fun. One, it was the new assistant principal at which building?
North.
North.
Yeah.
And she came up to me after we'd done the administrative stuff and she said, Yama's going to give you a little tidbit, a little thing to share, a little thing with you. She said, you were my superintendent for a year when I was in high school, the first time in the East. And so, you know, she was reminiscing about what it felt like to be a student, you know, that year with transition and. So that was really fun. And then fast forward, you know, working with the other new teachers. One was a high school student my last year there and I, she came up and gave me a big hug and said, I remember you hugging me with my diploma. And, you know, this is so exciting, I'm so excited to be here with you. So that was a lot of fun. And then a teacher that I'd hired 15 years ago for some of the multi-language work that we were doing with students decided to follow her children here and is excited to be working at one of the elementary buildings also. So it was a lot of fun. And then yesterday I got to go and meet some of the staff as they were doing their teacher leader training with PLC. And it was really fun to walk up and a lot of the staff were outside having lunch and some of them had seen me at the, you know, administrator meeting. So I got a chance to chit chat with staff and just engage with them at a fun level. And then some of Greg's former staff are excited to see me, you know, and so that's always great, you know? Taking pictures with them, so they can feel jealous. So it was fun, it's been a great week of finding my way around the district without getting lost, so.
That's a challenge.
It's a challenge. So, and I've managed to hit several of the buildings and visit and I, and as I'm writing a letter to send to staff and I'm looking forward to their staff meetings where I'm going to do a face-to-face with them. Because I think it's really important that they get an opportunity to see who I am and five, 10 minutes of their staff meeting to address any questions. And to really talk about the superintendent search and the role that the board is going to be doing this year and the importance of the transition of a year and what we're going to hope to accomplish, so it's been great. I'm looking forward to opening day.
Alright, I think one other thing that it was under, informational items, we had a couple of resignations?
Yes.
Okay.
We did, and those are two in Julie's department and she's shaking her head.
Oh, not on.
Oh, they're not on that one. I'm sorry, I didn't even. There were a couple of resignations. There were, which, yes, which is very typical for the end of the year.
Yeah, so do we do something else?
Yes, sorry, yes. I've been teasing Julie about that, that's why.
I'm sure Julie's not stressed at all about that.
No, it's not unusual and they have resignations at this time of year.
Right. Alright, we will move on then to board communications. One that I know that we wanted to bring up was something that we talked about last time, which was the ability to, to look into the option of maybe being able to livestream board meetings. I've talked to Elizabeth briefly about it and she said that she and Mark have looked into it. There's some pros, there are some cons, there are some things that need to be looked at in terms of, you know, like, alright, what does it mean, how do we accomplish it, what would it cost, you know? And like looking at all of the different things that would have to go into it, you know, ADA compliance falls in under this for live streaming or not, things like that. So I don't think we're in a place yet where we have a decision like, yes, it would be great and we can move forward or no, we absolutely can't do it, but we said we were going to be looking into it. And so just as an update, we are looking into it.
When do you think we could know for sure if we're going to do it?
I don't think we'll be able to have anything set in, like if we decided that we would be able to livestream, it wouldn't happen for the August meeting, that's for sure. I think there's enough questions about, that still need to be answered. But hopefully we could have some information back to you by the next board meeting. Does that sound okay, Elizabeth, like that we'll be able to look at some of those things by the next meeting in August?
I just want to be careful that we don't make this sound like it's some Herculean effort because we do livestream games, graduations, other things in the district. I don't have the whole list in my head, but it has happened and it has not felt, and I, I know there's nuance to doing a board meeting versus a game, I get, there's differences. I just want to make sure that we're not making this into a bigger deal than it really is and we don't make this an insurmountable task when it happens other places in the district.
Yeah, and those are some of the things, because you're right, it is different to have a board meeting that we have to have versus streaming a football game. And so it's looking at what those differences are and what needs to be done to overcome those if that's able to be, and if that's able to be overcome in a manner that makes sense and is cost-effective and things like that.
I have to wonder if it's not really a priority when school year is about to begin, there's a billion other very important things to handle. So then like.
Well, yeah.
There's a lot of questions.
Right, so the question is too, is that what was the answers we gave to the public before that we were not doing livestreaming? And it was basically because we were moving around to buildings was one of them. Now we're not moving around to buildings and that's not an excuse anymore. Second thing is what did we do during COVID because we did do livestreaming, correct?
There's Zoom.
There was Zoom, so why, why can't you set it up that way, we already paid for it, correct?
We couldn't do Zoom anymore, that was, the state allows for the state of our residency that they allow us to interact over Zoom.
I'm just saying some of those.
Yeah.
We were.
Yeah.
I would just be careful that some of the reasons we gave the public before is, is now those are not on the table anymore. Because we are getting in one, so if it's, you know, and the, and the cost of livestreaming, you know, during a time when we have a superintendent search that everybody's going to be glued to, to, to follow through on, I think it would be wise if we did do it and overcome the hurdles for it.
Well, and I think, I think a lot of people would like to have live streaming. It's just a matter of going through and looking at, okay, what do we have to be able to, be able to do to do the live streaming? And what are things that we need to account for and can we account for all of those things? There are, you know, there are things beyond just, oh, we were moving from building to building. So it, it'll be a conversation to like take a look and see what those are, reach out to MASB to find out, you know, what their recommendations are and how to do it, what needs to be included and what doesn't need to be included and all those kinds of things, just to make sure that if we are able to do it, which, you know, I, I think most people here would like to see live streaming, so it's not an issue of people saying we don't want to do it. It's just making sure that we cross the Ts and dot the As to make sure that we do it properly. And if those, if the hurdles are too insurmountable to be able to do it, to explain why. And I don't know what those are yet, so I'm, we're just looking into it and getting that information.
Which is probably not a lot considering we do it for other events, do you know what I mean?
I, I don't know. Alright, are there any other board communications?
I know CG is not here, but I did, there is the foundation scavenger month coming up on August 25th. So that's different this year because it's going to be after school starts, the same place in Legacy Park. And it's always been very successful, you know? Kids are excited about it, all the PTLs are there, so it should be good again.
Great. Can I, I'm going to go back to the livestream really quick. Is there a date we can put a timestamp on? Because I think at the August 21st meeting, we have, you know, a good answer, right? For the people to say, this is what we, it's came up discussion and like we put it, because the last time we discussed it was a month ago, correct?
It wasn't a full month ago because we can't, so.
It was July, July 12th, right?
Was it, was it July 12th?
It was July 12th, so we had a month to do it. So is there a way we can put a little bit of a timestamp or something?
We can share a document with you too that also looks at pros and cons and what is required for our district, including costs such as not only equipment costs, but for live captioning to be ADA compliant is an additional service. So we can definitely put those, those things. Once we, if it is decided to livestream, it will be livestreamed, obviously, moving forward.
Do you think that if we livestreamed it, it would take the place of the videoing?
We have the video livestream.
I mean the recording, I meant the recording, I meant the recording. And then all the work that goes into getting that recording finished and posted. I think that that might be one of the hurdles that they're looking at right now is because the recordings that they do, you can use AI to caption it, but then there's a lot of work that goes into fixing that. Because it's far, far from perfect and it takes a lot of effort on the communications team's part to fix that. And I think sort of looking at what they're able to do with the captioning for the livestream, it wouldn't be perfect either and I think there might be issues with that. So I don't think that it would be able to take the place of the recording unless it was something like you would have to go back and fix the captions that went out live later, I don't know. These are all technical things that the communications team is looking at.
Okay, I have a weird question on that too then. If a, if a public community member came in and wanted to livestream it, would they be able to? Because they're allowed to report.
They do.
So they do livestream it, so, but they don't have to go over all the hurdles that we do for that?
Okay.
Because they're not the, like, governing entity or whatever.
Right.
They're not.
One, one thing is I heard you, you know, to even bring it to the table in July was, and the decision to move it and have it in one spot, which, and I heard comments about, oh, I like being in the buildings. Something for the board to consider is whether for this particular year, would it serve you to be in the buildings? One, with a major bond coming up. Two, with the bond that you had in 2018, for community members to see what was accomplished. I know we send out little notices, but to actually be in a building where they see what was finished and, you know, let's go to a central middle school and see this amazing work that has been accomplished. Would it serve you well for this year to rethink that decision? And, and look at the different buildings in the district where it might not have been their turn, but guess what, it's going to be your turn because you're going to highlight all of what was accomplished with the 2018 bond. And as we go into the bond this fall, to be able to have a meeting in one of the buildings to show, look, this is really a need and look at what we could accomplish in this facility. So something to think about and then, you know, just being able to be back in, in the buildings. So for this particular year with the superintendent search and, you know, maybe different specific questions that you'd get from community members, whether you're at Central High School or Northern High School or Eastern, so just something for the board to think about. I know the August one, let's leave it as is and then we could, we, I'm using the royal we here. You would take a vote to make those changes of determining a location.
Well, yeah, I agree with that.
But I know, and I thought about that after, you know, and certainly not my decision to make, but a suggestion for you as a board to consider.
Yeah, that's an interesting idea and I, you know, given the fact that we do have the bond coming up to be able to highlight what's been happening, you know, like sort of tweak what would have been a typical schedule and just go, make sure we hit buildings that have had some significant work done to show the community.
Look, we're good stewards of your dollars and this is what it looks like in the building. And, you know, the staff is beyond excited to show me some of the renovations that have taken place since 2018. So I, I can only imagine how they feel about their open houses coming up and, you know, being able to have a community in there and showcase it to the board, I mean, I think it's important.
The bond is on this coming November's ballot, so.
On that note, it would just be three months minimum.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a bad idea, we'll probably take a look at that.
Just to think about.
Perfect. Any other board communications? Alright, we will move on to public comments then. At this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address and limit your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. For established procedures, we will now respond to questions or interrupt speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates that they would like follow-up from the district will get a follow-up from the appropriate administrator. And I just read that because we do this every meeting. There are, however, no public comments, so public comments are closed. And we will just move on to closing remarks. All good? All good? Alright. Alright, is there any other business before the board? Alright, there being no further business, things adjourned.